Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Jamie. It was off and it went back on, I swear.
Am I okay now?
Yeah.
Thanks again, Jamie. Welcome to our October 5th, 2020 Board of Selectments meeting. We opened the meeting at 6:00, then went into executive session in which we discussed two items. One was collective bargaining with Harwich Employee Association and Highways and Maintenance Employee Associations to discuss bargaining position. And secondly, to discuss the contract strategies or contract negotiations with the Finance Director and Chief Police. Both those items, we have some follow-up actions and those discussions will continue. We then are now moving, 6:40, we're moving into our open session. I'd ask you to join me in a place of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, as usual, it's our standing items on the agenda, and Joe, I'll turn it to you and Megan to talk about the COVID-19 update.
So, Mr. Chairman, thank you, but I'm left to my own devices this evening. Megan is on a scheduled day off and...
Well, good for her.
It's not a state secret, but Katie is working on her wedding plans, which will culminate the end of this week. So they've looked to me to do it, and I'm going to build off of what you see in the packet that was submitted by the Health Department, but actually tie items A and C together. So really, the update on COVID-19 for Harwich, first of all, is that in line with Governor Baker declaring that we are now in Phase 3 Step 2 as of today, October 5th. And at the time of that announcement, Harwich is declared to be a lower-risk community, so we are able to progress to Step 2. Now, what that means specifically, there's a conference call tomorrow between Lieutenant Governor Palito, the Mass Municipal Association, and Managers and Administrators. That's at, I believe that's in the afternoon of 1:00 p.m., so we're going to get additional follow-up based on what the Governor announced last week. And then beyond that, the Department of Public Health is also doing a deep dive. So we'll be able to have more information based on the fact that we were in that lower-risk community as of the time of Step, the announcement of Step 2. So more to come on that. Later this evening, we will be talking specifically about the action that Governor Baker took several weeks ago, and it sort of ties into what Cindy may be talking about, and that is working with establishments after November 1st to find ways that we can support them for outdoor seating if they choose for the remainder of the emergency. So really, beyond that, nothing more to update on COVID-19. From the town standpoint, unless there's questions, Mr. Chairman, I would ask you to then recognize our Chamber of Commerce Director for the Business Side.
Sounds good.
Good evening, everyone. Oh, God, I am so loud, sorry about that. As Mr. Powers just mentioned, no real changes. We're heading into Columbus Day weekend coming up, which I can't believe it's already that time. Businesses are still in their, our typical new normal, working business as usual, and hotels are still open, inns are open, and the restaurants, we'll talk more about that later on in new business. But basically, we're just status quo for now. The restaurant promo we started October 1st kicked off. Restaurants have been busy with that that are participating, so I'll just wait till the new business section for more.
Thank you, Cindy. Any other questions or comments for Joe or Cindy? Let's hope that we have a great shoulder season. We could use it.
That's the hope.
Moving next on the agenda is the public comments. Then we have a public comment from us. Same one from outside, so move to the consent agenda.
Move that we accept the resignation from Lirinda Raquel from the Harwich Cultural Council, and thank, I'd like to thank Linda at the same time. Move to affirm the appointment of Larry Broody to the Waterways Committee for a full position term to expire 2021. Move the appointment of Kent Drujell to the Waterways Committee, full position, term to expire 2022. Move to appoint Robert Thompson to the Cemetery Commission, full position, term to expire 2022. Move to appoint Sharon Moore to the Cultural Council for a full position, term to expire 2023. And move to appoint Peter Hollis to the Cultural Council for a full position, term to expire 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion. All in favor, I'll take a roll call. Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, and as usual, we thank all the five new members for stepping up to join our, one of our committees, and certainly Linda Raquel for her service at Harwich Cultural Council. Onto new business. First one is a, I guess we'll get Cindy back on, Joe. I'll turn this over to you. This is extending the outdoor seating.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the members of the board. You'll note on the agenda that this was meant to be a preliminary discussion, and so what it is, is it's relative to the release back on September 11th from the ABCC regarding extension of allowance of outdoor table service. I know you have it in the packets, Mr. Chairman, but I think it would be helpful if I went through this, and then we could have a general discussion. And I'm looking for input from the board to then develop a recommendation to come back on this. This is related to outdoor table service, which, as you recall, when we here in Harwich went through that effort, the Governor had indicated at the time that that was going through November 1st of 2020. Given that the pandemic is now in Phase 3 Step 2 in the Commonwealth, but does not show signs of abating in any significant sense, the Governor then, through the ABCC, put this directive out. And what it talks about is allowing you, as the local licensing authority, to grant extensions on outdoor table service for a period that goes beyond the end of declaration of emergency and goes for an additional 60 days after, which struck me as very significant. So as I had said at the time, we're preparing for town meeting, I thought it would be better to have this come back to the board this evening to start a discussion, and then roll out before the end of the month what we could do for those establishments. So what it's talking about in the notice from the ABCC is that the local licensing authority may issue extensions automatically to all licensees or may do so on request from an individual licensee, so that's an item that I would want to talk about this evening. It indicates further that you, as the licensing authority, may modify any prior approvals as you deem appropriate and proper and appropriate, because now you might want to address snow removal, pedestrian traffic, and other concerns if we're looking to do outdoor table service, and what this is suggesting is yes, through the winter months of a New England winter. Any licensee that was previously granted approval but has not granted an extension can only do their outdoor table service until November 1st. So this will obviously come back. I've scheduled it to come back on October 19th, so two weeks from today, to have a final recommendation for the board on how we should proceed. My first question to the board, is there a preference to do a policy that's all-encompassing, or would you rather have me develop a procedure based on each individual licensee that was previously granted outdoor table service?
I read it, and I missed the part about the automatic. I was concerned about the amount of time it would take us if we had to extend individual licenses. Can we, is it all or nothing? Can we do automatic with exceptions, so there's a couple we don't want to do, or do we have to do each one?
I don't see how you'd do that.
Yeah, so I would suggest based on...
I'm going to throw it out, because I can't, it seems like a lot of work, we have to do each individual license, but Michael, you got a comment?
I think we should support automatic. I don't see the need to put the town administrator, given the amount of time that we have, to do everything else that we're doing through that process again, or staff, or lack of staff in some cases.
Yeah.
So I think the automatic, I think we should support the automatic, and I'm not sure how much more you would need than a motion tonight to support it and then just have it be in play, rather than us have it come back.
What I'd like to be able to do then is just work internally with other departments, you know, Public Safety and DPW, to talk about, you know, the establishments that we know that have it, let's assume they're going to continue it, what do we want to do about snow removal, what happens during certain emergencies and things like that. So I would appreciate the opportunity to come back with a more formalized proposal, but I like the fact that you're looking to have it do generally, and it would not be the same intricate dive that we had done before.
Yeah, we all have the staff and they have to do that.
Just one follow-up. And Joe, as far as snow removal goes, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on that, because this is private property, and I don't know too many people that are going to go out to dinner in the snow and sit outside. I mean, this really is to extend the November, maybe first part of December, but these businesses are already seeing a decline in people going that want to sit outside already because of the cold, and then I think they're suffering because people don't want to go inside yet. So I think that anything that we can do, and as quickly as we can do it, to rest them, so they can be rest assured or extend their tent leases...
Sure.
Or whatever else they're going to do. I think we should make the decision long before November, and snow removal and safety, I think, falls on them, not us.
To that point, I get where you're coming from, Joe, but I was speaking, I'm sorry to everyone else. My point, I think we could go ahead and move to, move ahead tonight, and that you inform us what procedure is, just make it simple, but Ed?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I, I don't really have any problem with just doing a blanket extension to the 60 days past the end of the emergency. I guess I'm more interested in finding out what the issues are for this to be ongoing, because I think, as we've seen, people have taken to outside seating, and, you know, if the emergency ends, you know, there's the obvious issue that we, without having a hearing and all of that follow-all, we extend, we redrew people's licensed premises to include the outside areas without specifically putting those into, we know that's an issue, but I don't know what issues, if we look around, to how each of our restaurants dealt with this, what issues they have with parking requirements, setback requirements, encroachment, you know, all of those things that we may have to take action on if we're going to, in, you know, the next season, tourist season, recreate this. I mean, having people, you know, apply to expand their licensed premises area is pretty straightforward, we know that process, but I don't know what else would be...
So you're suggesting that, if I may, that this do this, because I collect data to inform us for next year?
Yeah, because we may have to do some modifications to various pieces of our zoning ordinance to allow it to be done again.
Steve?
Yeah, I mean, the only, the only issue I have with it, I think I go along with the, you know, automatic, but, you know, there are at least one, perhaps two, you know, businesses that have been a real problem for us, and it stemmed from outside. And so I don't, I don't know whether we could address that in this, but I know we are addressing it through hearings, but, you know, I just continue to get complaints, just, I mean, people are very upset with, you know, a couple of the establishments, and, you know, I just don't know whether this is an opportunity for us to make a point, but anyway.
Thank you, Steve. Let me ask Joe to respond to that, because you've been putting together the hearings. Can we handle that through separate action, or should we try to?
Well, according, there's two points I want to make in response to that. First is that if you decided to do case by case, you could do, you could require the individual applications rather than do a blanket approval. So we could factor in any other, as it says here, including addressing snow removal, pedestrian traffic, and other similar concerns. So we can tie it back to conduct of the operation as it relates to going forward throughout the winter, if that's what you're getting at.
I mean, I don't want to make this, you know, I don't want to turn this into a nitpicky thing. I think it was more just my need and desire to make that comment, I don't know, it just...
But if I may, there's one other point I do want to have the board be aware of.
Then Joe, I'll get to Ed, thank you, Steve, I'll get to Ed and Don.
It also says that you, as licensing authority, can do the extensions for any period up to and until 60 days after. So if you wanted to tie it to this licensing season for the all, for all year round, for the annuals, we could do that, and then readdress it in the next application cycle. So you have the authority to do beyond November and within your parameters for the licensing procedures.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mine's in the form of a physical science pop quiz, and I've asked people this question, and I think I know what the answer is. What's the difference between a tent that has four drop sides that are impervious plastic in a dining room inside the building for the purposes of air circulation?
I didn't think else I could have four drop sides.
Right, my response to that would be, I'm not aware that they changed that where they had to have three sides open. However, there have been significant changes to the orders.
If we get to the point where it's 30 or 20 degrees and it's...
Understood.
A gentle 30 mile an hour breeze on Cape Cod, I can guarantee you that they're going to put all around. You can't be warm in the tents otherwise.
Ed?
Yeah, I guess, you know, to Steve's point of, of not, you know, I think I'd be more in favor of doing, setting the rules uniformly for all establishments in town, and, you know, I don't really think, you know, it's solely the outside nature that has caused the problems rather than potentially management problems.
No, I don't think you're wrong. I don't think you're wrong, it's just...
Michael?
I'd suggest that we wait for Joe to come back to us at this point, that we give him the feedback that we want, and I think Joe's asked for it, and I think we give Joe the ability to come back with us with his thoughts, and then we'll, knowing that we support it.
Yep, I hear you.
And just a comment on the sides, they haven't, they have not added four sides yet, at least on CDC's guidelines. And then the only other thing, this seems to be, inside seems to be tied to people's ventilation systems and the circulation of the air and spitting the air back down at you, more so than... I get that, but if you do add a fourth side and there's no ventilation system in the tent, I'd rather be inside.
But right now, that'd be in violation, I guess, and so we'll see what happens. Cindy, let me ask you to weigh in.
So I agree with everything you said to this point. What I think I'd like to do, since we're continuing this till the 19th, is reach out to the restaurants that have the tents, because those are really the ones that would be extended or in concern with this. See if they're closing, if they're even extending past this weekend. Some, I believe, had their tents through the end of October, but what I can do is reach out, find out what they're doing, and then get with Joe on that, and then we'll have another conversation on the 19th.
Okay, that sounds good.
Cindy, I would extend that conversation. There's a lot of people that don't have tents that have outside seating and...
Correct, right. Yep, the patios, et cetera. No, that's correct.
Jamie, is anyone else, you know, want to weigh in on this discussion?
I don't have anyone on this one now.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Just a question through you to the board. So Harwich Port, I'm thinking of there are two establishments that were trying to make the outdoor work, but they are directly abutting the sidewalk. Now, the snow removal on the sidewalk, I would imagine that's a state road, but is that the town's requirement, or is it the establishment in front of their business?
It's a state.
Because that's the only other thing I'm thinking about as far as snow removal in certain instances.
And I was going to ask, I mean, it's a state road, but they aren't taking care of the sidewalks, I...
That's the road layout for the state, though, it's still the state. I've only, from experience, noticed that the town removes the snow from the sidewalk, not the state, or the businesses. Some businesses show the worst. I mean, for the rules purposes, it's the state's rules.
So that's something I'll incorporate as well. And again, I'll tie back with Cindy, but want to make it clear that the intent is to bring a full-vetted proposal to you all by October 19th, so that we can let the establishments know what's happening beyond November 1st.
Okay. And Joe, can you build in, we don't need by the 19th, but some format for people to track the data that Ed's talking about, if we want to, we understand what the issues are, we're talking outdoor seating for, looking ahead for next year?
Sure, absolutely.
Because I agree, I've gotten to like outdoor seating, but when it's nice.
Will do.
Thank you. Moving on to the next...
Thank you all.
Thank you, Cindy. Next on the discussion is the approval of hawkers and peddlers license for Pilgrim Lodge.
Mr. Chair?
Ed?
I move approval of hawkers and peddlers license for Pilgrim Lodge for the purpose of selling Christmas trees, and move that we waive the fee.
Second? Michael?
The discussion I have on this is I am against waiving the fee, and, you know, thinking about it, walking in here tonight, it's only $60. I've heard, through all of our budget discussions for, in spending over the last five years, we consistently say it's only $200, it's only $2,000, it's only 50, it's only 25. I don't believe the $60 fee poses a financial hardship to the lodge, and it covers our staff time to put a permit together, and I think that as we go forward, unless it's a financial hardship for some of these people, a $60 fee is not a lot to ask for, and given the financial state of the town and where we are with spending freezes, hiring freezes, and whatnot, I don't think that we should be making any statement to waive fees at this point.
Don?
Hearing, Michael, I tend to agree with him, but that doesn't mean, I mean, I'd be willing to kick in 20 myself from the board to do this, which would still be paying it, but...
Ed?
I think it's...
Does he make your motion? It's not a big issue for me whether we waived it or not, having sold Christmas trees with the Cranberry Festival a couple of years, it's sort of the profit on two six-foot trees. So Michael's right, it's not a big cost factor, so I'd be willing to remove that from my...
I'll take, I'll still second the motion.
Second.
Yeah.
I guess my only concern would be, not in disagreement with that, we remember this, the next one comes up, so we're consistent going forward.
Sure, that was Michael's point.
You know, so we don't, next time, we pay attention, so...
Just one last comment. I just want to point out to the public that this will be sold, it's in our packet, we read it, but at Bud's Go-Karts across from Star Market.
And, Mr. Chair, if I would add, you can see there's an designation or a notation on the application from the Health Director that COVID-19 protocol standards for retail would apply to this business.
Okay.
So they've been made aware of that as well.
I believe it'll be outside.
Yes, protocols still apply, however.
With no drop sheets, Don.
So they've got to wipe down...
That means I can't pull the tree away from somebody.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, other discussion. All in favor, Steve, I'll start with you.
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye on that. Next is a, we'd asked Joe last week to draft a budget warrant timeline. Thank you, Joe. I don't know if we need discussion on this tonight, but if you have any comments...
Well, I would like to run through it quickly, only because I finally was able to make sense of it. Of course, now I see the glaring arrow where they have the open parentheses in the header, that's going to kill me. But I rebuilt it. In other words, I was confusing myself with past versions that others had done and thought I'd like to just dive right into it, and so what I've done is the old town clerk trick of you work, you know, backward from the event. So I do want to just point out that I've entered the, what I consider the governance column. So anything that's in the governance column is something that I was aware of in existing either charter reference, bylaw reference, in the case of CPC, their CPC policy. So if the board's aware of anything else as far as the governance stand, I wasn't aware of it, so the dates, if you're aware of a standing policy that I wasn't aware of, the dates may need to be changed. I'm thinking specifically, you can see the first major deliverable beyond this evening, and that's Monday, October 26th. So that date and those participants, I put in, and I did base that on past years using a similar calendar of, given that a town meeting would be the first Monday in May, when would this occur in October? So I'm not aware if that's driven by anything else. So I did want you to just take an eye towards anything that doesn't have a governance to see if you think that that date's okay.
Don?
I should just roll back the tape from last year. This remains a concern for me, because historically, for as long as I can remember, going back to the 90s, we've had a joint meeting with FinCom where the employees came in and we had a budget book, and they could advocate why they felt that a particular thing was worthwhile or not worthwhile, but if we submit the budget to the Finance Committee on February 22nd, then that's already done. It's baked in the cake before you've had an opportunity to actually sit down with any department heads. If that's what we want to do, that's fine, but I'm just pointing out that historically, that has been the only time where anybody could ask for a review.
So what was, for fiscal year '21?
It was always early February where we'd all get together.
We moved that up, yeah.
If you look at Saturday, February 27th, I inferred that event, so is it the preference to have, I took it that that was a joint meeting, joint hearing. Is it, is it meant to be earlier than that date, and what date should I shoot?
We spent the whole, we spend the whole Saturday, and that was the precursor to actually voting a final budget on our part after we've heard everybody.
Okay. So you're suggesting now we move that up a bit from the 26th?
Earlier.
Earlier.
I know it's a lot, it's work, but...
No, no, that's okay, I'm just trying...
But in sequence, it doesn't make any sense to meet with people when you've already decided what you're going to do.
Okay, thank you, Don. Other comments? I think most of us are going to have to study this a bit. Ed?
Yeah, I'd actually like to, after, right after Friday, December 4th, put in Monday, December 7th, and the topic would be to begin preliminary review of articles, you know, so we can get an initial look at them.
You mean town-sponsored ones?
Yeah, town, yeah, of course. No, yeah, you know, petition articles, they come in, they have, they have a deadline, and we can't really require them to come in any sooner, but we have a deadline for the town-sponsored ones to come in too, but we should really look at those ahead of time so we can determine if they're doing the things that we want to have done and/or if there are any glaring omissions before, you know, having it come at the, at the deadline and find out that something was missed.
Thank you, Ed. We can, we can start that. Michael?
Just comment on the Saturday meeting. Traditionally, we all get together for the entire day, and we group departments, and we hear what we've already read. I find very little questions asked that day. I find that we take no votes on things that we start discussing that we want to get rid of, and then very quickly after that, we submit the final budget, without really any debate after the fact. Does it make sense to continue to do the Saturday thing, or does it make more sense to do what Don's, well, Don and Ed are talking about, about bringing different department heads in earlier in the process after their budgets have been submitted to Joe to make a case on why they may need an extra person, and then we vote at that moment to change it before we give the final budget to the Finance Committee.
Don?
I'm certainly okay with that, and that's kind of where I was heading, but... this past year, we had one of those dangling things where cemeteries, they had the staff taken out and we never had the discussion about whether to vote for that in the budget or not vote for it and then showed up in the revolving fund, which was the exact same appeal. I would rather have some time to discuss, do we really need this? I don't care how it's funded. But that was just an example. I'm not picking on them.
No, I, I think it's good, Michael, I guess my follow-up question would be, it makes sense of, well, your action I agree with, but would those be preliminary votes? Would we come back at some point when we have the entire budget in front of us and review? Because otherwise it'd be fragmented, we wouldn't know what it's going to look like.
Yeah, I think it would be after the Joe's budget presentation to us.
And then pull it back together and review.
I just think it warrants more conversation where we would actually take a vote of support. And if, in concert with what Stephen did this year, trying to be a little more in sync before we go to town meeting. I think this year we got hit with the pandemic, so we didn't have a whole lot of conversation after that Saturday meeting. But there was a lot of thoughts and ideas and things kicked around in that meeting that we never actually took action on. And then we chopped the budget up after the fact without having, I mean, that, the conversation about the cemetery employee, for instance, came to us how late in the game? And then we voted not to do that and change the revolving funds, and that was very last minute. And I'd like to avoid those things this year.
So let me just summarize where we're, what we're talking about.
One more thing.
Don?
Part of the summary. There was a period of time, and I think Ed was on the board at that point too, where we did exactly what Michael was saying, that we had major departments come in, like police, fire. They were part of the agenda because there was more viewership too, where the public could do it. And I do not mean to imply that we're pulling the rug out from underneath the town administrator. The idea back then was not so much micromanaging the numbers as this particular thing in that budget enjoys a higher priority to the board of selectmen than it's been given. Go back and see if you could take some money from someplace else and restore it to this area. But it's ugly when the selectmen start doing that and start pulling money out and putting it places so that if we do this, it still has to go back to the town administrator so that it can be balanced.
Well, that's one of my points. Still has to be put together once we vote. Summary is the wrong word. I didn't mean that. What I meant, clarification. If we did that instead of the Saturday, and we have John Chori on the, I see his pretty face there. Would we make each of those meetings joint with FinCom? With the department heads and, and John, you want to comment on that? Would that be, would that work for, you think, for your committee? You're muted at the moment. There you go.
And he's, you're identifying him as the chair?
He's, he will be, yes.
John, you're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
You can get back to us?
Yeah, he can, he can let us know.
You can, you can let us know, John, if you can't do it. In fact, that may be better. That way you can run it by your committee and, and report back to us. Joe, I think we've, Ed?
Yeah, aye. In, in doing the, the joint review on, on the Saturday, you know, it's, it's, I guess, by that point, we've had it, the town administrators' presentation of the budget proposal to us. And I, I'm assuming what we're talking about is having us do some review of it and make sure that it comports with the boards, the select boards' desires before it then is put in front of the whole group for review.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Yeah. So if there, if the town TAs presents his, his preliminary budget, then we can look through it and make, if there are any changes, glaring changes that we see about what, what's being funded, we can make those so what goes to the finance committee and everybody else contains actually what our proposal is rather than our changes coming in after the fact.
Agreed. I mean, I think the gist is, is let's have a good discussion upfront, which we haven't had a chance to do before the department heads, and have them present their case to us that we can react to and send them, and give them at least some guidance of where we're going as we develop the budget. Don?
Just realized, good lord, I don't want to give the wrong impression. We haven't done our budget message yet, but I don't want to give anybody in any department the impression that they come and advocate a large thing and we'll just give it to them and there's no problem, because this year, it's really likely that you're going to be having a discussion about who got cut more than who got cut. It really isn't about augmentation.
Joe, we, great job, by the way. Listen, I like the fact that you have the governance column in there because we all, at least we will keep track of where we stand with the charter.
Sure. Could I just, a couple of quick follow-up questions? And it's really pertaining to page two, but to go to that date in February, what I was trying to do is really accomplish two things at once. The Charter Reference 933 requires the finance committee to have at least one public hearing. So I inferred that Saturday exercise to have been that sort of event. The requirement at the top of the page, so 932, says that on or before the, on or before the 4th Tuesday of February, the board shall submit to the finance committee a budget which has been approved with or without amendments to the administrator's budget. So I was trying to just build that by the 8th of February, I have to give you my budget. By the 4th Tuesday of February, you have to vote a budget and then, then you partner with the finance committee, if you will. So I'll strike the reference to the Saturday event of February 27th and just defer to the finance committee to indicate when they would expect to have hearings. But is it true to say that there would be a joint meeting between the two parties?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, we still want to do that.
All right. So I'm going to add a few things and tighten up a few things.
Fantastic. Thank you, Joe. Let me ask, to vary from the agenda slightly, and I'd like to next discuss the budget message. That seems to be in line with what we're talking now. And as is evident when you read this, is I didn't change a lot from last year. I did emphasize the COVID section on that. And then point out that we all, we've talked, I think, almost every meeting about the difficulties that we unfortunately see in the next, actually the five-year budget, even before COVID-19. We were running, you know, close to $3 million shortfall. We followed that budget. And so I think that would be, at least what I tried to put together, that's our guiding light on going forward is we have to be careful on what we, on, with expectations of reduced revenue and unfortunately, we're going to have to make some tough decisions because we know that some of the COVID response is asking, is requiring us to hire more people. You know, the beach cleanup, for instance, but otherwise, I don't know what you want to do with this. We can, we can adopt it, we can make some additions and send them back to me. Michael?
Yeah, first, Larry, I wanted to apologize for not sending you information prior to the meeting. A very busy week and I did not get to it. So I would like the opportunity to send you comments, and I think just the first comment, there's several things that I've highlighted that I'll send you that some of them are minor changes that wouldn't require a board vote. Very second statement that you make, selectmen desire a budget that is within the proposition two and a half limits. I think you should remove that. We don't just desire it, we should demand it. And we should hold ourselves to it because year two of a pandemic, or going into year two after a pandemic, we've had deep conversations about the impacts, financial impacts that we're going to see. So two and a, proposition two and a half also allows for a percentage of the growth to be spent. So not only would it be a 2.5% increase, it would be a percentage of growth also. So I, I think that that sentence should be removed. And shortly, a little further down, you, or actually it's in our goals, you put in our goals to bring forward a budget of no more than 2%.
Right.
And, and I think that that's a more responsible statement. And I, and I think in the third paragraph, we talk about COVID-19 pandemic and 12%. Again, I think we need to emphasize that we're, we're going into year two, which we've all said could be worse than year one.
Right.
And I think that the language needs to be very strong from the board of selectmen to the town administrator, that we're looking to have a year similar to last year, where we're not bringing in positions that we may not need and we have all asked Joe for his recommendations on whether it be consolidation or whether it be whether or not positions need to be filled or capital items and we've given him kind of the latitude to come back to us with that. But our message, I think, should be stronger than it's ever been. And, and the one gentleman that spoke at town meeting, Gary Conroy, about the budget, he, he indicated, and I think it's a true number, that we've had a 44% growth in 10 years and 31 full-time positions in 10 years. We should fact-check that, but I did read some of the information that came out of the kind of revitalized taxpayers group on a much smaller level and they did a lot of work with Carol and they did come up with similar numbers. So if we've had a 44% growth in 10 years, asking for a two-year slowdown or demanding a two-year slowdown is responsible. I'll send you my comments in right.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Tomorrow.
That, that's pretty much in jest as I was trying to put together, except it's a little bit stronger with that. Ed and then Don?
Yeah, I think overall, I think the statement covers the issues that we're, we'll be dealing with in the coming year. Just, one issue is in the third paragraph.
Okay.
The second line says taxpayers have yet to realize the full impact of bonding for current projects such as Montemoy Regional High School, Cape Tech. I think you ought to, we ought to fact-check that with Carol because I believe at least with Montemoy Regional High School.
We are paying that, yeah.
We have been paying the, the full, I mean, it isn't like there are no more bonds that are going to be sold in an increased tax rate on that project. And I believe they are, they sold the Cape Cod Tech High School bonds early on to get a favorable tax rate. And so those are all in too.
I'll, I can correct that.
Okay.
Don?
Yeah, getting back to the operating portion of this. I've sat here with, with Michael for more than three years and I just want to say that part of the problem was, and I think we alluded to it at town meeting, but we got to be real honest with the public. The two and a half was meaningless because it was always like 7%. We were augmenting that through volatile things like fees or rooms taxes, meals taxes. And clearly this year, those didn't come to pass, so the bottom line is, I think what we really want to say is the whole budget, regardless of where it is being funded. We're trying to hold the line at 2%.
Yeah.
Because even that doesn't recognize, and I don't care whether it's baked into the numbers or not, you don't pay the borrowing out of your left pocket and the direct account out of your right pocket. When you get a bill, it's the bill for everything. So we have to recognize that there are some lingering capital things that we have to pick up on again and that's going to result in a tax bill which is far greater than the 2.5% number. So we, we have to hold the line. We just have to.
Yeah. Okay. What I will do is, Michael, you'll send me that.
Can you send me this in a Word document?
I will.
Thank you.
I certainly will. And I'll make those adjustments to 2%. I'll correct some of the borrowing, although I think Don's point is mine too, you know, we've delayed some capital items this year, you know, rolls. And so we're going to have to, there's still a chance that we have to build those capital items in the overall 2%. And that's where we want to hold the line.
I read that differently. I read that the aggregation is not fully realized in the, in the tax bills.
That's what I tried to say on that, and those were examples, but I'll take those examples out because they're inappropriate. But it's not inconsistent to do that and then the overall, our goals hold to 2% overall, and that's good.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement on that.
We're in agreement on that, so if you're okay with that, I'd accept a motion with those contingencies and then we can finish it.
Think we could bring back more.
Yeah, you don't need to.
We can bring, okay.
I mean, I'll get, I'll get mine to you tomorrow.
Okay. And then we'll, we'll get it out. Okay, good. We'll finish that.
I'm going to only argue, Larry, because I got a comment on each one of them. A little wordy.
Oh, boy.
Sorry.
On, on the capital items, you know, to the extent that they would impact the tax rate if we, if we pay for the capital items out of essentially ongoing revenues, whether they be local receipts or, or the tax levy or out of free, free cash, it really doesn't impact or increase the tax rate. It's only for those, those items that we decide to ask for a an override for, to pay off a debt or, or something that will have an impact on, on, on the tax rate. That being said, you know, in, in looking at some of the capital items, especially the capital items relating to maintenance and repair of our existing capital stock, I think it's really, we, in the coming year, we can look to keeping current with that because I think it's false economy to put off a lot of those items because it just builds a bigger expense for us down the road.
Okay, thank you, Ed. Joe, additional comments?
No, I defer to the board on this one. I understand everything that's said so far.
Okay.
Whatever you end up with will be incorporated in everything that I send out.
Okay. Steve?
No, no, I'm, I'm good. I'm good. I am in agreement with all the comments that have been made and I think we stay on the same, the same track that we've been on over this last year or so and I think the taxpayers believe that, you know, we're really putting the financial interests of the town ahead of, ahead of everything else and that's the most important thing.
Okay. Give me your comments then and I'll revise, revise these as we discuss and we'll bring it back next week.
I can't give them to you tomorrow. I'll give them to you Wednesday.
I'll wait, Steve.
Okay.
Let's move next to the. Pardon?
John Chori is.
John, are you on now?
One, I just wanted to see if I get my audio working for one thing. And then, and then, and then a quick question, I want to bog it down. I didn't really plan to speak just to listen, but just a quick question, do we have an estimate of what protected capital projects are for next year yet, Joe?
No, that's going to happen by the end of the month. I'm going to be having a meeting next week with the Capitol LA chairman and then working right on that plan to reflect the deferrals and then, as you see in the draft calendar, that's all going to be processed this month.
Great. I know it's, it's looking like a pretty big number, so, thank you.
It's a very big number.
Okay, thank you, John. Next is the, our goals, board of selectmen's goals. What was put in the packet was actually last year's goals. I revised that some and sent out. I'd ask you to do the same thing as, with the budget, our budget message, if you could look at the goals.
Mm-hmm.
I, you know, they don't change that much every year. I tried to today update them. But I'd like to bring that back next week after you've given me your comments.
Well, you already know to change the number two from proct, from two. Well, you already know to change the number two from proct, from two and a half, huh?
All right, I can take the usual, so. Michael, don't send me that, that one, that's a good.
Steve can send you that one. I don't want to be redundant.
I'll send it out to you folks in, in Word.
Thank you, Larry. I'm just going to ask you that, and if I may, one, just one comment.
Right.
On goal number four, actually, goal number three, objective C, continue to work with Dennis and Yarmouth to create regional wastewater. I think it's, we're due to have a more robust conversation.
We are.
And I think before, I would vote to make it a goal. I think that the, the board should speak by way of vote on importance of this, or add a timeline to this, because it's asked to bring this forward this year, to me, anyway, which I'll deny it now, rather than deny it later, I don't even want to have the conversation.
And I thought about this, Michael, because I do want the discussion, we don't have to have an action point, but I think we need to have the discussion on this one. And I played with that language, and I ran out of time.
Okay, thank you, I'll send you my comments.
Is everyone okay with moving it, send me your comments, and I'll bring it back next week?
Yeah, yeah, just piggybacking on what Michael said, we're not at that point, but I mean, if that, if we're, if we get to the point of Town Administrator's goals and objectives, we can't have a goal that the board itself has not agreed is a goal. If it's not our goal, it can't be his goal.
Right. Okay, we'll do that, I'll send them out to you, everyone in Word, and they will look for comments. See. Next, Joel, it looks like it's Financial Assessment, you have the day charter, is it, is that an action that you want to speak to?
It, it is. First of all, I had heard reference to it in other circles as a five-year plan, and so, I didn't find that language in the charter. The charter speaks, as you see there, to a financial assessment of where we are as a town. I'm going to stall for a moment, just to call that up, so I can read from it directly. Town Administrator shall present the board with the current financial assessment of the town, including the latest estimated revenues for the ensuing fiscal year, and any specific, specific related fiscal data. So, given how close we were to the annual town meeting, and this is not meant to be short or glib, but I think we have a very real sense of the assessment, however, I can validate that, working with the Finance Director to give a more in-depth discussion on some of those items. But I was confused, having seen it referred to by the, my predecessor, as the five-year plan, because I simply am just reading what's in the chart.
Okay. Ed?
Yeah, um, yeah, the assessment was always part of the Town Administrator's presentation of the budget, but it, I believe it was with Jim Miriam.
Yeah.
That he expanded that into not just for the coming year, and the current situation in the coming year, but to turn it into a, a five-year forecast, to provide a better sense of looking, looking into the out-years, and planning what we're doing now, and the impact then, and, and we've been doing that ever since.
Okay.
And I think it's, it's a, it's a very worthwhile thing to do, and I think we've seen a lot of our neighboring towns follow our lead, quite honestly.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now that he's made his point, I'm going to make counterpoint. Every year, we've had that five-year plan, and both Michael and I wound up choking on the, at year three or year four, we go, we take a deep dive, and we're underwater. And we always have the discussion, don't worry, because the revenues aren't there, that we're projecting for new growth, or whatever. It's almost irrelevant as a tool, because by the time you get past year two, we're always being assuaged by whatever Town Administrator it is, you know, that, don't worry, the cliff over here doesn't really exist. But if it really doesn't exist, then it's not a relevant document.
So, you're not suggesting the longer-range plan isn't necessary, it's just that five years may be overdoing it, three years may be more.
Yeah, because, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, every year, we looked at that thing, and every year, it was written in red ink by the time it got to year four or five.
Now, Michael?
I think I'd like to hear from the Finance Director on this one, a, a, as well as Joe, to see, see the relevance, because I do agree, that five-year plan, to me, was absolutely useless, other than the fact that we got to tell the public that we were year three or year four underwater by 2.8 million, which always made the chronicle, which always made everyone panic.
Yeah.
I do believe we should be doing some forecasting for the future.
Yeah.
Whether it's three years or five years, I, I would defer to Carol and Joe.
Yeah.
But I think it's important that we do look at out-years, but there has to be a little reality to this chart, because it hasn't been reality yet.
Yeah. Ed?
Well, you know, having gone through this for quite a number of years, it's true, it's, it's in the later portion of the, the five-year plan, that it looks like the, the town is running into trouble, but I've never known really any of the five-year plans to show the first and second years to be rosy and full of light. And we've always made some changes, or some accommodations in, in those earlier years to lessen the, the burden on, on what, what will happen in the, in the next year. And I think those accommodations that we make, as you get into the following year and redo the projections, rather than straightlining out the projections from where you were a year ago, you're, you're straightlining the projections of where you are a year hence, after making some changes, which then starts affecting the, the, the numbers on that third, the third and fourth and fifth year.
Yeah.
You know, so.
It's a good discussion, it's, I think my problem with a five-year plan, in some ways, it reminds me of strategic plans I used to worry about. And we do a strategic plan, and then you file it in the drawer, and you never look at it again. So, maybe a three-year plan, if we really tried to make it as, spend time out, and then try to stick to where we're going, that might be worthwhile as well. But Steve, comment?
No, I, I, I'm inclined to perhaps shrink it down to the three-year, but, you know, I'd be interested, as Michael is, to hear from Joe and Carol.
Hear, hear from you guys come back, what your thoughts are.
Sure, absolutely.
I guess my only point is make a three, is make it, be sure it's meaningful for us, so we can use as, as some guideposts, that we can.
Sure.
You know, do our job.
Well, I, if I can respond, because I think that's very well said, and what I also heard is, you know, there's a forecasting tool there, there's financial management, and I personally, not going into fiscal year twenty-two budgeting process, want to deny myself those forecasting tools as well. So, I, I appreciate this discussion, and I think I, well, I know that I can work with Carol, and we can come up with a very meaningful assessment of where we're at, and where we see the next few years. So, this is helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next is a discussion night, we voted actually a while ago on the, talking about the sewer regulations, and discussion I know is, I've had come up to me, is our initial regulations were that, once the sewer line was in, and I'm, I'm hoping mine gets in fairly soon, my house is vibrating, I, I think the whole thing's going to fall down. Once we were, line was in, we had a year to connect, the Board Health actually voted last, actually, two years ago almost now, to extend that one year to two years. Thought being from the Board Health is that it might be hard to find enough people around, because Chatham was putting in lines at the same time, and if, they took that action, but we never reacted to that to a, a board, and I wanted to bring this up, to see if the board would be amenable to basically going along with the Board Health's recommendations. The other aspect of this is the, is a little more difficult, because our Board Health recommends, the Registered Sanitary, we work, we're still tied into the Chatham IMA agreement, so we could vote on it, but I'm not sure we could continue that without Chatham agreeing to it. So far, they refuse to do so. I guess, Don and Michael?
Yeah, I just want to take the tail-end one first, because that's a technical thought. I understand that they had that baked into their sewer regulation cake, but then again, they paid for the pipes in their roads, so they had every right to be able to say, you can't mess around with our pipes unless you have it hooked in by a so-and-so. In this case, what skin does Chatham have in the game? We paid for those pipes as a town, we borrowed money to put those pipes in the ground, we are hooking into those pipes. If there's a leak, it expresses itself in an overall leak in what's going on, and it's in our property. So, I, I mean, where would they come off telling us that we can only have so-and-so hook up these, even though it could be a savings for our own taxpayers?
My inclination would be for us to take action, see what reaction is.
Yeah, I, I don't think they've got the legal authority to exercise what happens to our pipes.
We didn't give them the same reaction they gave us in the elementary school, you know?
Yeah, except in this case, in this case, we paid for the pipes ourselves. There, it's our contractor who's putting them in our road, and it doesn't hook into their system until we get past the border.
But the language of their IMA is clear, that's my, that's my issue I have on.
But that's when they had the authority to dictate to their own residents how the hookup should be effectuated. If we have people who are sanitarians, who can do the job, and for less than an engineer.
I'm not opposed to vote, Don, I've said that. Michael?
It, it, I, I've made this, this statement several times, it's, hooking up your, your house to the, the sewer line is just one of two fundamental bits of knowledge you need to know as a plumber, and so, why we actually require anything other than a plumber to make the connection, I don't understand.
So, I like them support, so there's your majority.
Okay.
But I would say that the, the, and I also support, given the, given the homeowners the two years, but do we have any idea what that's going to cost us for what our obligation is, and what we have to pay them every year, regardless of whether or not we hook up? The rest of it's flow variable.
Rest of it's flow variable.
So, are we going to cover any of our costs here? Are we going to fall into a deep, dark hole by allowing people are saying that you have two years versus one year? Does it make any difference, Larry?
I don't think that makes a difference, because we're committed to the hard costs, and I don't have that schedule in front of me.
Yeah.
I don't think it's, no, I don't think it should make, but, Michael, let me do this, so let me get some more information on that, to verify some more detail.
Okay.
You know, we're obligated to three of them, we had three different payments to pay the, the initial cost, and we've paid, I think, two of them, we need a third one, we have to catch up on.
And we.
Flow variable cost, we're still going to be behind for some time.
Right. And I, and I'm, so I'm not sure we're up against the wall on making this decision, though I don't want to drag it out, but I do think we also need to have the conversation that originally, when we went to town meeting, we voted, and this was going to hook up six hundred homes, and now it's only going to hook up four hundred homes unless we spend another ten million. And I think we really need to kind of get into the bottom line here, how many homes are going to hook up under the first phase, realistically going to hook up, and, and, and know the numbers. As far as the regulation changes, I think it's a pretty easy vote, I'm willing to make the motion if you want to get that done tonight.
I'd like to, I'd like to answer that question, because that comes up.
The money question first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the, no, no, I'd like to get the regulations set, because that's not going to be.
Do we want to verify what it's going to cost us, before we make a motion?
I think in the scheme of things, it's not going to be significant with the flow, because everyone's going, it's going to drag on one or two years, I don't think that will make a huge difference. Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I will take note, because this could affect everything that's just been said. There doesn't seem to be any process involved with the, give them an extra year. It's, it isn't based on a demonstrated hardship as follows, it just seems to be, if you're having problems hooking up, it could delay for two years, and the revenue may, because the flow from, you can't be donating flow to the system if you're not hooked up at all. And we may be paying Chatham for something that we're not getting reimbursed on the other end for. So, it would be interesting to know what the criteria was that they were trying to employ.
They being the Board of Health?
Yeah, because it, it's a commendable thought, we'd like to give people more time, but it doesn't seem to be based on any real demonstrated problem.
It was, it was based on the assumption that there were a limited number of, like construction, whoever lays what the correct title was, who installs your connection to the sewer line.
We can change that tonight.
That.
There won't be a limiting factor.
Well, no, because the sanitary engineer versus design, that's, that's actually the guy putting the pipe in the ground, that's a different, and so, the feeling was, if we're doing it all this, and Chatham's doing it at the same time, the other town's on the Cape, that it's going to be limited, and people needed more time to be sure they could do it. It wasn't looked at hard, it wasn't looking at, I don't think.
You mean inside the house changes?
Yeah, no, hooking, the work to actually lay the pipe from your house to the main sewer line, there are a limited number of people have that capability. And so, there, far as I know, there wasn't a discussion on hardship, any, anything like that, it was just being sure that we could get the work done.
I'd, I'd like to see what that cash flow looks like, myself.
We can, we can try to do that. I mean, it's not, it's been saying for a year, almost two years, it's not urgent tonight.
Yeah, I, I don't want to hold it up, Larry, but I do think, you know, we approved at town meeting an operating budget of two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, I think, for the Water Department to take over, take over sewer, and I think that we really should get a, an idea on what's going to, where that money's coming from, how many people we anticipate are going to hook up. I think Dan Pelletier could add a lot to this conversation.
Yeah, we'll, we'll continue the discussion, Joe, we'll bring that back. I mainly wanted to put this on, because I'm getting questions from my neighborhood about, you know, do we need to hook up immediately, one year, two years? And so, I, I don't want to drag this on forever, because people are trying to plan ahead. Next is a vote on the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, there's a scrimmer's error, that November fifth was meant to be November fourth.
Okay.
We don't forgive you for that, Joe.
Do we approve the Board of Selectmen minutes for November fourth, two thousand and nineteen?
Second.
November twelfth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
November eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Don, you have a, excuse me, Michael.
You only want to do one at a time?
Yeah, because by the time you get to the eighteenth, Mr. Kakounis's name is misspelled.
I moved that we approve the Board of Selectmen minutes for November fourth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Roll call then, Stephen?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
I'm an aye, Ed?
Aye.
Don, aye.
Any problem with the next one?
Nope.
I moved that we approve the Board of Selectmen minutes for November twelfth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Roll call, Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Eighteenth, we okay with?
Yeah, although the next one has Mr. Kakounis's name spelled correctly, and couple times, and incorrectly a couple times.
So, I moved that we approve the Board of Selectmen minutes for November eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen?
With, with.
With correcting.
Leo's name corrected to C-A-K-O-U-N-E-S in all instances.
That's my motion.
Second.
Roll call, Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
I'm an aye, Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I move that we approve the minutes for November twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, Board of Selectmen minutes.
Second.
Roll call, Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so, thank you. Again, well-written minutes. And we don't want to offend Leo, and have his name spelled wrong.
We'll just say that you, you in paragraph two, under the board's budget message, referred to the CWMP as the CWPM, so we won't hold that against you.
You're too generous. Next on the item is Goals and Jetties, interim Town Administrator. Steve, thank you very much for working on this, and Joe, I think, I know Steve worked with you, and I know Steve's very interested for your comments and input into this, or, I guess, are you, I'd hear from, I guess Steve first, and then Joe?
No, I think Joe wanted to, you know, make some comments on it, so.
You wish to comment on these?
Sure, several, but first, I'd like to thank Selectmen Ford, not only for working with them on these, but as he's already mentioned, I think this is a tool that is familiar to he and I, and a form. I think this is a tool that is familiar to he and I, and a former life that I had with a former employer. Um, and I think it's, uh, very well laid out as far as to how they're developed, and I think equally important, uh, well-defined on what you can, um, add as output standards, if you will, on the definitions. I wanted to explain how I, I wanted to incorporate your, um, your draft of goals, if you will. Um, I had some individual questions as the other party, if you will, on the requirement to do this, but, um, to, to make the overall plan work the way I understood it, what I did was each of the goals that you see is, that's actually a competency that comes out of the position profile that you use to do the search for the town administrator. And so, uh, it worked out nicely that there were five, because as you read, uh, the recommendation on these for it to be effective is that you have five goals. So, what I did then is incorporated your goals as the measures in what I thought was the appropriate competency. So, for example, um, if you look at results-based goal one, municipal finance and budgeting would be the, the goal competency. And I wanna put it right out at the very beginning. That first bullet point is a goal that I, that I've added, and, uh, in full transparency, it's a goal that I've added, because it's a goal that I've completed, uh, as interim town administrator, and that relates to what I had just gone through with the budget process and town meeting. So, I want you to be aware that I added that one, and obviously, we can have discussion on, uh, what stays and what goes.
For people, uh, watching, would you read that?
Sure, uh, develop a balanced budget for fiscal year 2021, and establish a plan for an outdoor annual town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next goal that's there was an original, uh, draft item from, from the board. I'm not sure if it was the board individually, um, but I worked off of that and put in the third bullet point there, and I wanted to explain that one. So, um, you had in your draft, manage fiscal year 2021 budget, which obviously, I agree with and should be incorporated there. And then the statement, and develop a fiscal year 2022 budget with 0% tax rate increase. So, I wanted to discuss what was meant by the implications of that. I put in a third bullet point that says, develop, develop a balanced budget for fiscal year 2022, utilizing all available revenue resources. Now, um, I do not think this runs contrary to the discussion you just had about prob. 2 and 1/2 and all of that, meaning, uh, your goals, as you create them, should be incorporated in my goals to some degree. So, when I talk about all available revenue resources, that does not supersede your directive if there's no overrides or debt exclusions. To me, that would just mean that those are not available resources. And then, uh, lastly, you folks, um, through your process had talked about, develop a five-year plan and provide direction based on the pre-COVID forecast, which showed a $2.8 million deficit, realizing that post-COVID the deficit could be greater than 5 million. And I think, well, what you've talked about earlier tonight, that could be, uh, probably wordsmith into develop a multi-year, uh, financial assessment tool,
Okay.
so on and so forth. So, the two things I wanted you to take away, first of all, is that every goal ties back to a required competency of a town administrator, based on what was previously developed, and then try to integrate your goals, uh, draft goals as measures.
Okay.
And so, I don't know if you've taken a vote as a body, or if you wanted to have a back-and-forth discussion on these.
Let's, let's take one goal at a time and discuss the first one. So, any comments on this one?
No, I mean, uh, this is, this is not the final version, right?
It's not the final version, no. So, we won't take a vote, we just asked for input tonight.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Because I think we've, uh, I know last time, we had a discussion whether it was appropriate to say 0% tax rate increase. I know, I know John's still in the, but I know I talked to at least one member of the finance, they were talking about 0% tax increase. That makes no sense, because that's an absolute number, and we do, so is it... Looking for some language that ties it in to minimize our, uh, so I look for some other comments on that. I think the last one, Joe, is to change the last line to, from our discussion tonight on, yes, maybe three-year assessment or multi-year assessment is certainly appropriate. Michael?
My only comment, my first comment was, um, the 0% tax. I mean, you could, you know, our goal, and, and I think it was mentioned earlier, Don mentioned it. If it's not our goal, it can't be his goal.
Right.
And I think 2% was the number that we picked. I don't, we didn't vote on it, but we picked a 2% number, so you could put a 2% number in there. That's one comment. The other comment would be, I do agree with you, multi-year, uh, financial plan, whatever. It doesn't have to be five years, and we don't have to specify that we're already at a $5 million loss, because the numbers never, if we just go back to the last three-years, five-year plan, the numbers change every single year, they're never the same number anyway. And I would ask just to, uh, we can go through this as much as you want. It's a fairly lengthy agenda, it's 8 o'clock, and I don't know why we wouldn't just send our comments, um, to Stephen or to Larry.
Why don't you send them to me this time, and I'll copy Stephen's?
Just on what, what we wanna change or what we might wanna add.
And I'm for that. And what I can do is I'll send them out in Word.
Larry? If I could, um, and the whole intent behind this, no matter what the governmental entity or the corporate entity is, is that, um, the policy or the, or the, um, objectives of the town, meaning the selectmen, objectives of the corporation, all drive what the individual is supposed to accomplish. So, whatever we set for goals for ourselves, that determines for Joe what the goals will be, and for the rest of the employees.
Thank you, Steve, that's the point I wanted to emphasize, too. It rolls to the rest of the department heads as well. We all need to be, you know, marching in the same direction.
Right.
Do you wanna say more?
No, I mean, that's, I mean, I know that's a very general statement, but that's, that's the way the structure of this is supposed to work. And, um, you know, what we do determines what Joe does, determines what, and what Joe does determines what departmental heads does, do, and then each individual that works for the town. All of this should flow down through, and the hope would be that, you know, department heads would use this same kind of evaluation, so that we all work off the same sheet, know what we're trying to accomplish, and are able to give everybody the, the sense that they're, they're being judged on their competencies, whether they've met, uh, the goals that the town has established, have they contributed in the way they were supposed to? So that it's a holistic, uh, approach.
Thank you, Steve. Ed?
Yeah, well, a couple of things on what we just said. One, it's, it's also not just to the department heads, but also, some of our goals and objectives will also depend, define what we expect certain of our committees to look into.
True, yes.
Are separate and apart. But the, uh, this issue, uh, um, over the, where it says, uh, budget with a 0% tax rate increase...
Yeah, well, no.
The, the problem is the tax rate is the wrong term.
Yeah.
It, it should be tax levy, because the proposition 2 and 1/2 is, is intent is to control the growth in the tax levy. The tax rate varies all over the place. You can, it, some days, sometimes it can be, go up 10%, but you collect less money. If you, you know, it, it all depends on what, what happens with your assessments, so...
Good point.
We need to stop using that term when we talk about what our, our spending target is.
Don?
Yeah, two things. One is about what Ed just said, uh, to get even more into weeds, but we need to, actually. Should we not accept the 2 and 1/2% tax levy? That's really has the effect of an underwrite, and, uh, we're gonna be in real trouble that we don't need to budget for the full levy amount, which is really what we're talking about in that area. But it definitely is not about the tax rate, it has nothing to do with that. Secondarily, I know we're gonna submit these, but I do wanna make the pitch that, uh, when it talks about all of the sewer-ing things, contract three, which we haven't voted on, uh, phase three, which we haven't voted on, DHY, which we haven't voted on, I'd feel a lot more comfortable that, uh, he pursues the objectives as outlined by vote of the board of selectmen in those areas.
Yeah.
Because you can't give him a goal that we, he doesn't have, that we don't have.
And, and I, I realize that, I lost, I didn't get any time to, to wordsmith, make it...
Because he's in the implementation business in this area.
I think we agree.
I'll, uh, I agree fully. Joe, do you, uh, wish to tackle any of the other items? And we'll, uh, have a comment on those as we move forward.
So, I, I guess I would take, um, an open-ended invitation to say, as, uh, Selectman Ford had indicated, um, you're talking about a performance management plan that's meant to cascade. And so, we're starting at the second level, where you folks have already started talking about the top level. So, I do think it's helpful that when you finish your goals for the year, that you tie them back into this document, um, because that's the other part that I just wanna make everyone aware of. If you go to the, I think it's the second to last page, there's a statement there that precedes the acknowledgement of performance rating structure. And it begins that the board of selectmen shall review. So, that language is drawn directly from the agreement that we struck on September 1st.
Yeah.
And so, it's not lost on me, and I know it's not lost on you. You're developing your goals for the remainder of the fiscal year. You're developing goals for the remainder of my contract, which would expire, um, soon after the fiscal year begins. And so, um, we talked in there that you're gonna have at least three opportunities to evaluate me, but there are limits on that. So, I would suggest that we are running out of time for you to have something upon which to evaluate me within this calendar year, so you can remain on a three-evaluation schedule. So, um, I, I don't object to an additional week, because I do think there's a tremendous value for both of us, you as the town, me as the employee, to tie it all together with your board goals, which is all gonna tie together to everything I'll be doing for the rest of the year, anyway. So, I hope that made sense. And then, lastly, I would offer, though, there is a few goals in there where I'd like to have a discussion with the board about the available tools that I would need to accomplish those. And that is a, um, oblique reference to, I would ask the board to reconsider your policy on signing contracts, um, greater than 25,000. When we talk about procurement, I think the quickest way that I can break the logjam, as you'll see this evening, uh, there are at least two contracts that are coming before you tonight that could have been signed, uh, more than a week ago, if I had that signing authority up to the original policy. Not to litigate that tonight, but I would like to have that as a potential discussion, because I think that's a tool that will help me get the goal done in the short time that we have, that we're talking about with this interim contract.
Michael?
For one board member, I would support going back to 50,000, because of how things are being done now and how, uh, how much more complete they are in the packet. I did have some questions on these contracts tonight. Joe, I, 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 I voted strongly and spoke strongly to drop to 25, because every contract was wrong, and because we're putting our name on those contracts. We are now, uh, at least having a finance committee, uh, finance director sign off showing available funds. We are now, um, mentioning what contracts they actually are, so a board member can go and look them up. And I was gonna ask tonight if we, uh, have a filing system now, whereas if, uh, the state came in to audit our procurement, that they could go and pull a, pull a file, or I as a board member, or, um, Joe as a resident, could pull a file and, and look at it to make sure that it's complete. Has that process started, where, where that stuff is being collected in one spot? And every procurement contract that we're doing has a file, and the checklist that, that's been created is done?
Yeah, so technically, the answer is yes in two places, meaning, uh, original contracts, um, after they've been executed, go straight down to our finance director and the accounting department, so they have the contract, so that they can evaluate any, um, invoices that are coming off of that going forward. Uh, a copy of that contract remains in the procurement office, if you will, uh, assistant town administrator's office, in the file system that I actually set up a year ago as assistant town administrator for that very purpose. Meaning, uh, were an audit to happen, we would have them start with the assistant town administrator to show how the procurement proceeded. Would have the executed contract, the specifications, any of the documents that I use to make the recommendation to you as a board or to, uh, execute the contract if appropriate. And all of that is in place and has been in place going forward. So, we do have that. So, uh, on the case of an audit, we would say, start with administration and fi- finish with accounting, so that they can see that the accountant has the contracts as required by statute. We have all the backup in administration, uh, to defend our actions, if you will. And then, lastly, if I could, just one final point on the 50,000, because I appreciate what, um, Selectman McCaskill has just said. For me, the proposition is very straightforward. I would ask for the authority to sign contracts up to and including 50,000, as was the policy, because I fully expect and want you to then evaluate me on how I did with that. So, if I, um, if I perpetuate any of the things that were done before, I know that I'm putting my, um, my review in jeopardy by, by doing that. So, I'm asking you to give me the tools and then hold me to those, quite frankly.
Michael?
So, just to follow up, this performance management plan for the interim town administrator, is this, is it my belief that we're gonna vote on this, this year, or just the town administrator? Or is it your position that you're gonna take? You know, we've argued in the past about evaluation forms being consistent. So, with our four direct hires, they had the same performance evaluation that the town administrator had, and then trickle down to the department heads, they would always do self-evaluations, but it was really all in a consistent form. Is it our intent now to vote this for just you, and then make it a goal for you to put this forward to the rest of the department heads? Or are we tackling, uh, one at a time?
You know, if I could, Larry?
Thank you.
I mean, I, I'd love to see it be the standard form. And I don't know whether, what Joe's thoughts are on whether he, you know, uh, moves it forward, or whether we basically say in a vote, this is what we want. We want everyone to adhere to the same performance management guidelines, so that everybody feels they're being treated exactly the same, you know? So, I don't know.
Last point on the, on the goals, um, I don't think we've ever agreed on goals. I, I don't think a, a full board has ever agreed on what a goal structure should be. And, and I think when we go to performance evaluations, I think back to two years ago, when, um, board members gave a town administrator 40s, and then another board member gave him a 99, and another board member gave him an 87. So, uh, how you evaluate yourself on, on what they are, and that's why I've always said actions and deliverables are more important than goals, because it's a, uh, it's a very specific action and deliverable, and not just, um, your interpretation of mine on the goal. That was, that's just one comment, I'm not stuck on it. As far as what we grade Joe on, and this is where I'm going with it, Joe, I can evaluate you right now for the first quarter, just based on town meeting and all the prep that went up to it. So, to your comment that we're running out of time and you don't mind another week, we have enough to give him a grade right now on what he's already done, at least in my opinion. And then, looking at, um, things like management, how are we supposed to, um, grade Joe on management when we're not supposed to talk to department heads and department heads don't weigh in? And when I had done my goals and objectives in 17 and 18 with the actions and deliverables, it was quite a lengthy list of goals and objectives, but it wasn't for the town administrator. It was basically for the town administrator then to delegate to a department head a specific action, a specific goal with actions and deliverables. So, if that got done, um, we very easily could recognize that that got done and grade him on management, rather than just guess, or an interpretation, or from what we may hear, or from Joe's report of what may have happened and what may not have happened. So, how do we, how do we grade on management when we're not involved in the people that you manage without very specific actions and deliverables?
Well, I, I think there, I, I, you know, in, in the management side, at least in my experience, there has been, uh, and there should be, um, specifics, uh, deliverables, because, you know, you, you're, what you're trying to say to the manager is, here's what we expect you to accomplish with the employees that are reporting to you. We expect this type of a budget, we expect these type of performances from the people that work for you. So, you're, you're judged as a manager on the performance of all the people that report... So you're, you're judged as a manager on the performance of all the people that report to you. That's, that's, that's how it works. Now, if we could word it in certain ways to make it more definitive, to give you more comfort, we can certainly do that. I mean, that's not, and, and we talked to Joe about what those are. And, and I, and, and yeah, you're right. I mean, I, I, you know, my experience has been that we use this system to review people on a quarterly basis. And we actually sat down with, you know, I sat down with every, one of my direct reports, and they were theirs after me. And we, we made an assessment of where they were at this point in time in the year. That gave everybody this, the ability by the end of the year, especially the employee, to know, you know, I'm either doing good and I'm accomplishing what I need to do, or I've got some things I better clean up real fast to make sure that the goals I was set for the year, I'm going to finally accomplish. That, that's the whole sort of objective of having it on a quarterly basis, if we could do it. And it also gives, you know, it gives the employee a real sense of participation in it. You know, they, they feel like, and, and they may not get a review that they like very much at the end of a quarter or at the end of a half. I mean, that it, you know, it, they could be upset by it. But what it allows us to do is to say, hey, you know, we're, we're calling you on the table here. You're not getting done what we need, instead of at the end of the year saying, you did a horrendous job, and, you know, you're out of here.
I love quarterly reviews.
That's Don and then Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recognizing that we all speak based on what we're most familiar with. And I, I do understand that. The two things. Relative to the management of the managers, I, I don't want to fall into the trap, and I definitely agree with what Stephen was saying about deliverables. I don't want to fall into the trap that a happy manager is a good manager. Because that doesn't equate, that there's a goal. Different managers have different styles, but the goal's the thing. It's not whether you love your boss. So I, I'm not troubled by not talking directly to department heads because it's really an analytic. It's not an assessment of personality. Secondly, and this is more important to me, I'm not so sure that I would vote to increase the 25 unless. Because there was, there was a reason for that. It wa- it didn't just, it wasn't just arbitrary where we walked in one night and said, I think we should change it to a lower number. Having been a professional contracting officer, the one thing that I know is, and I saw a bunch of these. It wasn't just that they were wrong on, you know, paper wasn't here, or that the research wasn't done there. In, I mean, I'll give you an instance. The Snack Shack went out as an RFP with one scope and got awarded a contract with another scope that was different from the scope that was originally contracted for. And I had a con- a conversation with John Giorgio about that. I'd be okay with raising that number, only to the extent that we get a chance to see both the RFP and the resultant contract after the fact, if it was signed. Because if it's, if, if it's a deliverable here and it's going to have an effect on the job performance, that's great. But there was absolutely no relationship with the contracts, the dollar values, and the efficacy of what was going on. There was absolutely nothing. It was just pure luck. If we hadn't seen what was going on, we wouldn't have known what was going on. And at one point in time, there was at least rumor, and I'm, and I personally believe it, that different people were being told, don't tell the selectmen about this relative to a contract. And that, and I really don't ever want to hear that.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Go ahead, Steve.
I, I think Joe earlier made a point about this, to answer, answer you, Don. That what he's, his plan is, judge me on it. You know, I'm going to make sure these things don't happen.
I only made the comment because in the past, that had not been the case.
No, no, I understand completely.
I know, I think, Joe, you're in our discussion. If it went to 50,000, that, that in no way limits the information flow to us. We'd be completely informed of all the things you're talking about, but we give Joe the freedom to sign the contract. And I think that responds to your concern, and I know we've, that was your, your discussion, at least with me as well.
We could still see the RFP in the contract and all the backup documentation even after you awarded it?
Of course. But, but, but I want to explain 50,000 because it, I know that means something right here in the town of Harwich, and, and obviously the, I'm fully aware of things that have happened prior. My reason for suggesting that, and, and because it's up to 50,000, I've noticed, and I think Griffin, as the, the other half of the original procurement team would back me up on this, as would Bob Lawton. When the inspector general changed procurement in 2000, July of 2018, and you had staff changes here, it wasn't until I was brought in as Assistant Town Administrator, was told to address it. The $50,000 threshold causes the town of Harwich to cut the IG's recommendations on procurement in half. Rather than having a, three standards, if you will, of less than 10,000, 10,000 to 50,000, and over 50,000, which is how the IG recommends it. We have something that says 10 to 25 is town of Harwich, 25 to 50 is town of Harwich, and then over 50 is town of Harwich. So you've taken a three-column document, which is very easy to understand for the department heads, and to the goal of reincorporating them. And you take out, you, by doing it the Harwich way, you've taken a three-column document and cut it now into five columns. And that's what I'm getting to. In other words, it expedites the procurement process as it was built by the state and is regulated by the state, and dovetails with an original policy here. And again, as I've said, it's not to be litigated tonight because I will, I would like to give you a proposal on all that. And in that proposal, I would give you all of the elements of that. And that is, as I've said, always hold me accountable. And I would do no differently as I'm doing this evening. Well, I don't believe we have any this evening, but whenever there's a contract that's less than, that's 25,000 or less, I presented it to the board. I give backup. And to the earlier point, when we reach to the level of an RFP, which is a heavy regulated thing, I would never not seek the board's approval of that sort of contract. Because RFP is heavily regulated. You are required to have all that documentation. So it's not even me out of the goodness of my heart, or me out of my willingness to extend my career here. It's recognizing that there's a legal obligation.
Okay. I think we've talked about this now. Thanks, you. What, what I propose is, is that you agreed to send me your comments on the, our obje- our goals. It measures. I'd ask you to send them the information you have on Joe's goals and objectives. I'll work with Steve on it, you know, going in and out. So incorporate it. And then what we'll do, and I'll work with Joe, because then what we need to do is, is to look to be sure they're consistent. We have them on one spot, so we need to, that's where from our discussion, I would go back and look and be sure we're consistent from our goals to Joe's goals. And we'll, we'll move ahead. We'll try to get this back as soon as we can. Is that, is that okay with everyone?
You should agenda his request for the contract signature authority, though.
It's already in the draft for next week, Mr. Chair.
It's already in the draft for next week. Okay.
Take that liberty, sir.
All right, let's move on. Michael?
Crystal clear on what you're looking for. Stephen, just a question for you on the performance rating. Five rating categories.
Right.
How are we going to rate those? Are we putting, are we assigning a number to those?
No. It's just, you, you either rate extraordinary, exceeds, achieved, below expectation, unsatisfactory. At least in, in the, in, in what I have done in the past, for the past 25 years. That's how we did it.
So you're comfortable?
At one time, we did have a, a rating, number rating system, and it didn't work.
Well, I understand what those, what those mean. I guess are we, so we're just, we're just calculating how many satisfactories versus unsatisfactories?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And I urge you, like Larry said, any additional goals, more worded in a more specific way, please, you know, bring those forward.
I, I think my only comment on that, and maybe to your comments, Michael, now I get, Ed, is my experience has been, we all have different experiences, is that as miller manager, my goals were as specific enough that to do my job, the people reporting to me had to do their jobs. I wasn't asked to look at them individually. So I think we need to be specific on that, but I think that reflects what you say. Ed, then we?
Yeah. I can't remember what was, where we were in the discussion that triggered this. But in, in sort of looking at and doing our evaluation of our town administrator, whereas when he does his, his evaluation of, of the person below him, and those people do the evaluation below them, there's the, they set up this, I'm assuming there's, there's typically an interview with the, with the, with the individual and say, okay, these were, this is what you were supposed to do. Show me how you did it and what's been done. We don't really necessarily, the five of us, have that sort of interview individually with Joe to be able to find out that information. You know, that's not to say we individually could, but, you know, that, that sort of differs on sort of how much knowledge we have of what's, how the things that we've assigned to him that have been flushed down to people below him to accomplish, how it's been, how that accomplishment has, has done. Well.
Steve, you can move on.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry. Believe me, I don't want to delay this anymore either. I mean, that, that, I, I think each of us should be talking to Joe. I mean, how do you come up with your satisfactory, unsatisfactory, exceeds, if you don't talk to Joe? And, you know, the, at, at the beginning of every one of these performance evaluation processes, I would sit with the individual that reported to me, and I'd say, these are the things I think you need to accomplish this year. Tell me what you think about that. They would come back and they'd say, well, I agree with these three things, but not these two, and here's why. And we'd come to an agreement as to what their goals were going to be. And then, at the end of a quarter, I would say, here's where you are. This is what I see. They would say, okay. They get to make their own comments, too. I mean, they can make their comments on the sheet. But I still was the one who in the end said, you know, on each one of these, I would say, in one area, you exceeded all expectations. In this area, satisfactory. In this area, you, you didn't make. And the accumulation of those determined, in most cases, you know, what I was going to give them for a bonus. But also what I would make a statement as to, you know, their, their performance for the year. And that went into their file.
Thank you, Steve. Michael?
Yeah, and I don't want to extend it either. I'm going to, I'll put everything in writing to you tomorrow. Just on the performance rating, and the reason I asked about the numbers is traditionally, we all do performance evaluations and we give a number, and then there's a grade of 75 percent. 75 percent means you get your cost of living increase and onward and upward. Some of us wrote narratives, others didn't write narratives. So in a case on goal number two, where Ed thinks you exceeded expectations, and I think you were completely unsatisfactory, you know, we don't have the ability, we can all talk to Joe individually if we want. His performance evaluations are done in a public setting because that's where they have to be done. So it's going to be, it's going to be with a grade, at least, the chairman would say, you know, the employees did, or the selectmen did their, their thing, and Joe received a such and such, and, and we, and we move on from it. And then the narratives are part of public record, or there's no narrative. If, if you have a board member that's not willing to sit with Joe and say, you're unsatisfactory in this, and this is what the performance is, he'll never understand what he did. And that's why I thought the number thing made a little bit of sense, because it was an easy way to do an evaluation without getting into anything openly in public. And if, if the town administrator, which he shakes his head because he's used this document, seems okay with it, then I'll be okay with it.
Joe?
Well, first, thank you. I, I had a comment earlier, but I want to immediately build off of what Selectman McCaskill was just saying. And I think Selectman Ford would agree. As you review this draft document, I would ask you to pay attention to those rating definitions. And because they should tie back to your goals and expectations. And within there, there's talk of core competencies. So again, you remember that the goals themselves were the core competencies required of an administrator. Good, bad, or otherwise. In other words, this is what got you into the building, so to speak. As an example, if you look at the middle definition of achieved expectations, I would encourage you to read those definitions because I do not want to be held to the second bullet point entirely. Because it says exhibited a strong commitment to the town's needs. That's all well and good. It goes on to say, and inspired all town employees to exhibit that commitment. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to be held to that impossible standard of getting everybody behind me 100 percent. So that's, that's a point to be made. Second point I want to make on this is if you look at it, you know, we tend to read top to bottom and equate that. I read this, and I've always read this in my prior employment, as, look at it, think of it differently, that the middle, there, the middle of that pack, achieved expectations is meant to be the baseline. This is meant to be the, if you do this, things will be accomplished every day, and you will continue to succeed, and you'll continue to succeed, and the town will move forward. When you do exceptionally well, you go to those higher bars. When you do exceedingly poor, you go to those lower bars. So that the expectation that I have going into this is the same that I would hope you have, that if nothing else, I achieve that middle bar. Because achieving those expectations, as you can read there, says, I've achieved all the critical goals that you've identified. So anything less than that is unsatisfactory. And then the last point if I could make, which is beneficial based on this contract, you have established that I'm going to be evaluated at least three times over the next 10 months or so. That's extraordinary, and I agreed to it because I think it's beneficial. This system works when you do it at least twice in a 12-month period, but more optimal that you do it quarterly. And so you're going to have benchmarks immediately from me under this process because you'll evaluate me two times, and then evaluate me a third time. And then the fourth time, you're going to make a decision presumably on what happens to the end of my contract. So that, that has to be part of it. So please be aware of the definitions. Change the definitions if you like. But there's a, a concept in this whole plan that can work because of multiple evaluations, as you intended in the contract.
Okay. Let's, Steve, and then?
One last quick, final comment. And this is to Michael's question, comment. This does rely on all of us participating. So it does, quite honestly, in order for it to be successful, we all would be obligated to talk to Joe. And we would be obligated to write our commentary. You know, you can't just say, oh, here's, I, I check off, you know, meets expectations. No, we expect you to say something. And, and I don't think the, I don't think the overall concept works unless you do it. You know, you, everybody has an obligation here, you know, to, to give their input, to listen to Joe's input, and to make a very honest conclusion about where he stands.
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, and I just want to make it clear first, I was not saying that I don't talk to Joe, because I do talk to Joe. And then just the, one, Don's comment. I don't want to talk to the department heads either. I was only saying that the goals, if we gave the police chief a, a goal to paint the side, or the DPW director to paint the sidewalks around town, again, crosswalks, and it got done, it was a management thing. He did it, and it's done. That was my point, not that I care to talk to the employees.
Okay, let's, let's move on because we're running out of time.
Running out of daylight, right. So I can speed this up, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like. But item J, you'll see in the packet that last week, the town of Harwich, as did every other town on Cape Cod, received a note from Aaron Perry, Deputy Director of the Cape Cod Commission. And the Cape Cod Commission has formed a Cape Cod Climate Initiative. The timing couldn't have been better based on the discussion we had on an article that turned into a resolution at town meeting. But the reason why it's on your agenda, and you can see that it is discussion and possible vote to establish the town of Harwich delegation. So in the middle of that letter from Ms. Perry, it states, we are asking that each community send five to six representatives that might include town administration, staff, appointed committee members from committees such as energy committees, climate action committees, conservation commissions, or similar, and select board members. And then finally, if possible, we'd like your local lead on the municipal vulnerability preparedness program, which we completed within the last year. And of course, that would be our town planner, because we'd still have her on October 14th. But it was to get a sense from the board, some direction as to who you think should be this delegation for this event taking place on October 14th from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m.
Doesn't give us much time, does it? 14th to?
This nor the next one.
So I guess the easy part is. The staff appointments, I assume you can work with Joe, yourself and Elaine and, or Charlene rather. And those now. That leaves us then. Do I have an interest from a, a selectman? Ed? Any else, anyone else volunteer or wish?
I nominate Ed.
Is there a, a second? All in favor? I'll take a roll call. Steve? Michael?
Aye.
I'm aye. Ed?
Aye.
Don, aye. So. I guess we can ask. I can go through Bad Chase or, or Amy can for conservation if they have.
So that's what I have for my notes. So we have Selectman McManus, myself if you wanted, Charlene, and I was gonna reach out to Amy and. I was gonna reach out to Amy and Charlene anyway to see if they'd be interested, as well as perhaps any other people that were tied into the MVP process. So that we could get to that quota of five to six.
Also, the energy committee.
Yeah, Stephen is the liaison to that one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So you'd have to find out who the chair is.
I'm not sure who's the chair anymore.
I'm not either. Val?
Val Peters?
Val Bell?
Valerie Bell.
Valerie Bell, okay.
Danielle will have her contact.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
On that one, thank you. Next one. So a very, I would say, really scant information in the packet. But this builds off of an email that I had received right before posting of the agenda. And given some hiccups that were, that occurred before with this operation. I wanted the board to be aware that, that Maggie Downey has sent this to me. Asking if the town of Harwich wished to participate in the next municipal power supply request for proposals. She indicates that she's contacting me because we participated in an earlier RFP. And the committee, the compact intends to follow the same process that they've been utilizing since two thousand nine, except for in-person meetings. Which will now be conducted by Zoom. The current municipal power supply contract term ends in July of twenty twenty-one and due to twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-one budget season. I'm sure she means fiscal year twenty-two budget season approaching. They are looking to lock in beyond fiscal year twenty-one. What she's asking is that if the town would like to participate. That someone be identified to fill in, sign, scan, and email back the agent authorization form to her no later than this Thursday, October eighth. So the timing was good enough to put it on the agenda to seek how the board would want to respond to this.
Well, I always go through and write my notes on the activity and of course, you've, you've already listened, you've already mentioned that. These last minute, it was poorly done before. When, you know, the outcome, when it goes through is good because we do get solar power. And I understand if I read this right, is we signed this, we're not obligated to anything after the fact. Is that correct?
Correct.
So there's now downside for us of entering into the agreement now and seeing what's around.
So really, yeah, what we're doing is we're agreeing to participate in the request for proposal process so that when that's finalized. Maggie will go back to the group of authorized agents and say, here's what we've come up with now if you'd like to continue.
So there's, there's no downside for us doing it at the moment?
I don't see one.
Don?
I, I don't know how to read this then because I'm looking at something that says. That if they, we elect to do this, that we're going to be purchasing. Participant to purchase all of the generation for electricity it designates for participation in the RFP. From the chosen competitive supplier for such term.
See, I was looking, yeah, I guess that's, I'm looking at another line where it says, agreement that's not constituted binding obligation of any kind.
Yeah, but it does, it comes right out and says, that, you know.
Where are you, where are you reading?
Where, where, where are you at?
It's in the contract she sent.
Yeah, one, two, it's the second paragraph. Participant understands that if it elects to execute the M C E S A recommend, recommended by the compact or provides the compact the right to execute. Whatever you have, pricing fix for each contract year and will commit the participant to purchase. All of the generation for electricity accounts it designates for participation in the RFP.
I read that as a second step after the RFP, not, not the first.
I don't see how. You go out on an RFP with a scope and it's, and the scope would be who's bound to buy from you. Because, I mean, volume means something in a contract. If you're, if you're guaranteeing. Generation of something this big as compared to that big, it means a different price generally.
So I, I took it slightly differently, that line of participant, so participant in this case would be whomever you direct me to put in the form. Participant understands that if it elects to execute the MISA recommended by the compact. So the RFP is the process of getting responses back to that. The second step is the MISA. If the agent by you agrees to that MISA, the town is bound to it. So I took this to be as was the last time. This would be an effort for someone to represent the town in the RFP process, get the information and then report back.
And then we could bail at that point.
Can we clarify that?
Well, it, it's, it's pretty clear.
Not based on her timeline.
Not based.
I mean, it says the other participants.
They always give us like an hour and a half to.
I, I read it differently, actually, but go ahead.
I have too. It, it says, the other participants take part in the RFP. Nor does it obligate the participant to execute a MISA. The participant understands that if it elects to execute a MISA recommended by the compact, then it's bound to buy the stuff. But only if it was, we're not obligated to execute the MISA, whatever that is.
I, I, I know, but I found that to be contradictory.
So I hear positive motion.
So there's a broader implication that does the town wish to remain in the Cape Light Compact? Because her email indicates that each participating municipal entity must either participate in the December seventeenth Zoom event. Which is the RFP process, or have signed and submitted a proxy authorization letter. Either you send an authorized agent to that process, or you surrender your rights to the compact.
I, I entertain a motion if anyone.
So if you recall, we did this back in May, I believe, where you directed me to be a part of it.
I move that we. Agree to. Be part of the process of requests for proposal. And authorize the chair to sign the required document.
There's a participation person, so.
Right.
Would that be the town administrator for the Zoom call?
Laws are down, I didn't hear you.
Are we required, Joe, are we required to designate the participation person? At this point, or just sign the document?
No, my understanding is the person listed in the document is your participant for the event. So whomever you want to have involved in that process is who would be signing as the participant. So you could authorize a member of the board or anybody else to do that.
So we could authorize you to do that.
That's why I brought it up.
Ed, do you wish to include that in your?
Yes. Authorize the town administrator to sign the document.
Ed, is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
But, Mr. Chair, I would want that to be part of the discussion of the Zoom call. It was like, to what extent are we pre-obligating ourselves? Because their own letter is. I am reading it differently than you are, but, which means that almost anybody can read.
Do you wish to join Joe in the Zoom?
No, he understands.
As requested again by some towns, the compact is also inviting, but not requiring, RFP respondents to propose add or pricing for exceeding state. So they go on to talk about the process. It's twofold. They want to know who would be participating in the December seventeenth call. And then. So what I would recommend is that you authorize someone to sign this document. But this would be a perfect opportunity for me to reach out to Maggie to have her present to this board well ahead of the Zoom call. So we can talk about the hiccup we had in the spring and have a full understanding of the expectations before December seventeen.
And that's why I would like to designate him, he's the procurement official. That's why I would like to designate him, he's the procurement official in the town and he would know the implications of those questions.
My, my disappointment is, is that we've, you've mentioned twice hiccup in the spring and we've all been dismayed by that. And now it happened again. I think Michael exaggerated, but we have like two hours to sign it.
Well, I, and I would just, my only comment before you call for a vote is at the bottom, it's ironic, at the bottom of the letter it says. Working together toward a smarter energy future in this twenty-two towns listed. I think it's extremely unprofessional of Cape Light Compact and Margaret Downey to submit this on October first for a vote tonight. And she did, she did it before and I, and she continues to do it and I think she's not representing Cape Light Compact well at all.
Okay, but we have a, yeah, we obviously all agree with that sentiment, but do we have a, we have motion and a second? Other discussion? If not, all in favor? Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
No.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Abstain.
Abstain, I mean, yes. So, three, one, one.
My abstentions for the same reason is no vote. Gotta give us more than five minutes to decide things.
Joe, can we move to contracts?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would go straight to the contracts and, and first just say that. I, I heard the discussion last week and I did not want to hold up anything that was already in progress. I did not have an opportunity by the time of the packet to do my cover memo. I did however, have an opportunity to sit with the town engineer as our procurement officer. I agree with the memorandums that he's presented and wanted to offer this to the, to the board, understanding that you may not, may opt to not go forward on some of these contracts. Based on our procedures. But this is an example where I didn't want to stifle procurement. I'd rather have them all presented to the board through me by the town engineer who worked on these. I know he's on the call and prepared to speak to them, but in every instance, I've reviewed them and recommend your approval.
Okay. Michael?
I move that we approve and to execute a contract with T W Nixon for brush grinding at the transfer station in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? Don?
Yes, and in so doing, I, I want to make the point that whether we delegate a higher amount or not, or approve this tonight. I still would like that letter to be part of the record ultimately because my, my comment always was. A verbal presentation isn't worth the paper it's printed on for these contracts. At some point after we approve it, it's still gotta have that recommendation slapped on the front of it because somehow. Our meeting minutes don't always align with, you know, the, the contract documentation. And I would really urge that no matter when we approve the contract, that there's a recommendation in writing.
Okay. Joe, you okay with that?
I am. I offered these contracts this evening to see if the board wanted to hold off on them for that information. Or if you wanted to expedite.
I don't want to hold them up, so I'm willing to do it the same and make motions based on you giving the recommendation letter for the file.
As long as they're backfilled, I'm fine.
As they're backfilled, you're fine.
The only other thing I was, and I was gonna ask for it kind of at the end, but Joe, we, you, I think it was you that, that came up with the checklist. I'm not sure that that was Chris, but somebody came up with a checklist.
The checklist was Evan.
Okay. I thought that checklist was great and a, and a good addition to the file that showed that everything that was required under procurement was done. So we had the letter from you, we had the sign off from Carol, showed that the procurement stuff. But I thought that that checklist was a very easy thing for the board to digest in a meeting quickly. That everything that was, that was done and it's the town administrator affirming, bringing it before us that that stuff has been done. I, I think the checklist is something that we should go back to. We could debate that later if, if there's objection to that, but I, I thought that checklist was very handy.
Okay.
Same comment.
Yeah, many chances. I, I think we can explore that, huh?
No disagreement whatsoever.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So, next contract?
I move that we execute a contract with rotary lift for the purchase of a mobile lift system in the amount of seventy-three thousand, six hundred, twenty-four dollars and ninety-one cents.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Only comment I had on this, Joe, is I didn't see that this had gone out to bid. Did it not have to go out to bid?
So it is. Griff, I'm gonna defer to you on that. Was this a comms buy on the, the lift?
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
We can.
No.
So this one, this one is actually through Sourcewell. Sourcewell is an approved cooperative purchasing. Arrangement that we can use for thirty B supplies. Can't necessarily use it for construction or anything like that, but you can use it for supplies. And I did confirm that with the Barstool County Procurement Officer.
So it did not have to go out to bid?
It did not, no.
Thank you, Griffin. I'm all set.
We have a motion in a second. Take a roll call vote. Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Next contract?
I move that we support the golf course maintenance, maintenance equipment lease for approximately ninety-six thousand, six hundred, eighty-one dollars and eight cents.
Second.
Discussion? Michael?
Just for the public's sake, can Griffin give a very brief discussion on why this is an approximately number rather than a solid number?
It's, it's an approximate number. This is the number that we got through John Deere's leasing arrangement. We talked, I talked it over with Carol and as did Sean, and we think we can get a much better rate. This includes an interest rate of four point two five percent. Which is a little high. So the thought is once, when, when we get the final number, we can look to get the lending elsewhere. And have a, have a reduced rate whereby that number would be down, would be reduced from the ninety-six thousand.
Thank you.
No other discussion? Go for roll call vote. Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Next contract? Michael, you're on roll.
I move we vote to support the sewer construction phase two, contract one, Robert B. Hour request for change. Zero one five R two for approximately ninety thousand, nine hundred, thirty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents.
Second, approximately.
And that's to be paid out of the five percent contingency in the phase two contract.
Right. Yeah, other discussion? If not, roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I move that we approve the catch basement, basin replacement and drainage infrastructure installation. Which is unit price work, contract extension for one year in the amount of three hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred, expiring October first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Discussion? Michael?
Only discussion is there's no list of drainage work to be done. Is that to be supplied later by the DPW director? Is it based on need or is there a list that already exists on what they're going to do?
I, I, I believe it's based on need. So basically, last year, we put out the bid. Based on a certain number of, of drainage installations, which is typically what they do each year, moving through the town. So I think, from what I understand, Chris Dickerson has a pretty good list of backlog of what needs to be done. And just kind of continues to move through the town utilizing this contract to improve drainage throughout town.
Thank you.
I was gonna ask the question just slightly differently and get to the same endpoint. I think two years ago, we had a plan for all the wastewater case that we had to submit to the state. And maybe we can get an update on where we stand on that plan.
Not wastewater drainage, right?
Not wastewater drainage.
Yeah.
Is a state requirement that we look at all this and we had to submit a plan. Bob did that, I think, two or three years ago. Be good to get an update. Just, hopefully we're getting near the end of that.
Understood, yeah, will do. And I, I also wanted to add on this one, as it's referenced, that last year, we had discovered that. It's meant to be a, a contract with a few extensions and as Griffin has indicated, this is the first extension on the contract that was executed last year. And that's all in accordance with thirty-nine M, which is the other statute.
Thank you. Other discussion? I'll go for a roll call. Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Moving on, it's the town administrator if you report.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have some, some uplifting news on some appointments, but before that. You had asked me to do some research based on an inquiry you received last week regarding the West Harwich Schoolhouse. So I will admit that what I found was the town meeting vote of twenty seventeen. That the article was prohibit the demolition of the West Harwich School. It was a vote at town meeting of one oh nine to seventy. I didn't find much beyond that. I did have a conversation today with representative from West Harwich Neighborhood Group. And there's interest in that. Harwich Neighborhood Group, and there's interest in that. So I am prepared to give a more in-depth discussion beyond TA's report tonight. But as a follow-up, I did find that town meeting article. I didn't find anything beyond that since 2017.
Yet, I think the Neighborhood Group is suggesting there might be a way to private, sell that to a private concern. I'm.
So that, that's one of the conversations I had that would require an RFP by the town. So if the board?
Right.
Has no objection, that's what I'm prepared to do.
You're prepared, you're prepared to us.
What I do want to mention, however, is that Sean Libby, Facilities Maintenance Director, had reached out to me several weeks ago to let me know that he'll be taking measures to put a temporary, temporary repair on the roof to keep the building standing, quite honestly. So there, there'll be a minor temporary repair for the roof. And then very quickly, as you'll see.
Joe, let me just, on this one, Michael, you had.
As we move forward on this, we've kicked this can down the road for, for a long time, and we have gone out with RFPs before, Joe. So as we start to put together an RFP, and I know Sally Urbana was online tonight, she's been very involved, maybe reach out to her, but this has been offered in an RFP once before.
Thank you.
But through the chair, I'd like to, I'd like to have a, a discussion on this, an agenda item on a night we don't have as much stuff on.
Okay.
But there is a lot of information in the files on this.
Excellent, thank you. And as I mentioned, appointment letters, we have new appointments for Executive Assistant in the Building Department. Very excited about that one in particular. As you know, we've been short-staffed in that department. Now, the only open rec for the Building Department is a part-time inspector. Building Commissioner has already advertised that. So hope to have a fully-staffed building complement, which is absolutely necessary where during pandemic, people have gone to their nests, if you will, and are either buying houses and renovating, or renovating what they have. So this will be a, I think, a very positive addition for the Building Department. The town clerk has filled, and I agree, the Executive Assistant for Town Clerk. This is the role vacated by the now Yarmouth Town Clerk. So to be able to get the Clerk's Office fully staffed or presidential is of utmost importance. And you'll see that DPW is bringing in a tractor-trailer driver, and the Water Department is bringing in a distribution laborer. Be very mindful to say that these are not new positions, these are all positions that were budgeted, and the departments have demonstrated the need presently. So excited to have those filled. And of course, we have the Department Report of the Hovermaster. That is my report.
Thank you, Jill. Selectman's report, Steve?
Nothing.
Michael?
No report.
Ed?
Nope.
Don?
You can always count on me. Sorry. There's going to be meeting, a virtual meeting on Friday, I mean, Wednesday afternoon for the Barstool County Wastewater Management Board, that has jurisdiction over that one component of the rooms taxes. Just want to reiterate, the, the current version of that gives absolutely no credit at that level for competitively getting grants for multi-town endeavors, basically because you've already gotten that criteria. You've been bumped to the head of the line because of the clean, the state's revolving fund. So it was felt that you'd be giving, like, extra credit all the way through the process, and that wasn't what the intention was.
Okay. I'm glad you explained that, because that's probably one thing I would have caught right away, probably everyone else.
That's why I'm explaining it.
I don't have anything else out of there.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Roll call, Stephen?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?